Well, thank you for that introduction, David. I think I turned this on. It's a pleasure to be here. As David said, I'm now the academic dean, vice dean at the law school, which means I'm doing a lot more administration these days and a lot less teaching. So it is really exciting and fun to be able to talk to an audience and actually talk about constitutional law and not administrative work. I did not incorporate nearly as many puns into my presentation, so I have no Giffords puns at all, so it's a plain vanilla presentation.
That was a pun!
That's the best I could do on the fly. So, you know, you mentioned Lee Softly. She's my current boss. She's a former chief justice at the Supreme Court, Maine Supreme Court. She's now the dean at the University of Maine School of Law. And, you know, I mentioned I was going to come here and say some very controversial things because that is what I like to do. I like to say things that I'm not 100% sure that I agree with, but throw some ideas out there. And about 10 years ago when I arrived here, so most of my work, most of my scholarship focuses on judicial ethics. It focuses on judicial selection, how we choose judges. About 10 years ago when I arrived here, I was invited to a presentation to the State-Federal Judicial Council. This is a meeting every year, state judges in Maine and federal judges in Maine, our first circuit judges and federal district court judges get together, they talk about issues that are facing the judiciary, and they invite somebody, often an academic, to talk about some issue that they're interested in writing about. And so I came in, I did my presentation, and about my own research, and I was never invited back. And so I reminded Lee, our dean, that about my presentation and the topic, "Oh yeah, I remember that one." We all hated it. All right, so, and here was my idea at that time, this is kind of the focus of my scholarship. It's loosely related to what I'm talking about today. It relates to kind of how we think of judges. In our system, if you believe that a judge assigned to your case is biased or has prejudice, you can challenge that judge's impartiality. You can file a motion and say, "Judge, I believe you are biased, and you should recuse yourself in this case." It is the judge, him or herself, that decides whether or not they should step aside, right? There's no oversight of that. There's no opinions written, most of the time, deciding that legal issue. And so the argument that I made in a Law Review article was that not only is this bad practice, that it's unconstitutional. The judges can't decide their own recusal motions because they're being judges in their own cases, right? The more biased you are, the more prejudiced you are in favor of a client or a former ally, a former contributor, a close political friend, right? The less likely you are to recuse yourself. And so that was the argument, that I suggested recusal decisions have to be made by somebody else, by another judge, who should write an opinion, explain their decision, so the law of recusal develops, as opposed to having one-off decisions. Sometimes in Supreme Court cases, we'll see a judge has recused him or herself, we won't know why, they often won't write an opinion. So that was the argument. The judges really didn't like that because that really challenged hundreds of years of history of how recusal has been done, and they said, you know, in Maine in particular, it would just bring the whole judiciary to a standstill. You have to wait for some other colleague, and in some places, in more rural places, it may take a while to find another judge if another judge forces you to recuse or disqualify. So I was told my ideas are unworkable in a place like Maine. So I'm going to have a controversial idea to finish this presentation today as well. It's an idea that, as far as I can tell, nobody likes. I suspect that very few of you in this room will like it, but I'm going to present it anyway. But before I get to it, let me kind of set it up and go back to the founding of this country, right? So, at the time of the founding, when the Constitution was being ratified and debated, there was a huge debate around the nation, around various issues raised by the newly proposed document, newly proposed Constitution. So in 1787, you have this document, a convention of delegates delivers this document, Constitution for debate and ratification. Americans are vigorously deliberating and debating whether or not it should be adopted. And in fact, you know, sometimes forget how close this vote was. You know, the Constitution was barely ratified. In the states that really mattered the most, the biggest states, it was a very close vote. Virginia was 89-79 to ratify it, in Massachusetts, 187 to 168. In New York, it was a three-vote difference in favor of ratification. So it was a very vigorous debate, and the Constitution almost wasn't ratified, it would have been stuck with the Artistic Federation. The topic that received the most attention was the lack of a Bill of Rights, right? So the initial document really just creates a structure, the bare-bones structure of the government, doesn't have the Bill of Rights, and so the anti-federalists argue, "We've got to have a Bill of Rights. Our state constitutions have Bills of Rights. We want to make sure that certain rights, speech, jury trial, a few others, are protected in the Constitution. They have to be in writing." The federalists said, "There's no need for a Bill of Rights. These rights exist, they're natural rights, they exist without anybody writing them down." And in fact, it's dangerous to write things down, right? If you're going to write them down, people will assume those are the only rights they have, whereas there's a whole bunch of other rights that may exist. There are a number of other debates, most of them focused on the structure of the government, the role of the president and legislature. Surprising, there's very little debate over the judiciary, but there is some. So if you look at the Federalist Papers, which was kind of the best-known defense of the Constitution, it's not until the late '70s numerically that Hamilton gets to discuss the judiciary. But while it wasn't a huge issue, it was an issue that was debated, and the anti-federalists made a couple of major objections to the way that the judiciary is designed in the Constitution, right? And Brutus, who was writing, one of the main authors of the Anti-Federalist Papers, made a couple of arguments, right? He wrote the following, "The Supreme Court under this Constitution would be exalted above all other power in the government and subject to no control," right? The idea is that there's nobody above the court. Nobody reviews their decisions, they're not accountable to anybody, right? Legislature, if you don't like how they decide a legal issue, vote them out of office. The court can strike down a piece of legislation. No one's above the court, above all other power. The judge, he says, "I question whether the world ever saw, in any period of it, a court of justice invested with such immense powers and yet placed in a situation so little responsible. The judges under this Constitution will control the legislature, for the Supreme Court are authorized in the last resort to determine what is the extent of the power of the Congress. There's no power above them to control any of their decisions. There's no authority that can remove them, and they cannot be controlled by the laws of the legislature. In short, they're independent of the people, of the legislature, and of every power under heaven," right? Met, he says, "They control the legislature, no power above them," says, "Men placed in this situation will generally soon feel themselves independent of heaven itself," right? And the basic idea underlying this argument in the Anti-Federalist Papers is that, in a democratic government, government institutions, those who make our laws, right, they should be accountable to someone, and if there's no accountability, that power will corrupt the institution, right? So we talk about superior powers a lot, Congress and president acting as checks on each other, serving relatively short terms, right, so that the people can actually decide, "Do we like this president? Do we like this legislator?" Supreme Court justices, as Professor Melchior said, serve for life, and there's no review, at least of their constitutional decisions, right? Statutory decisions can be overruled, overturned by Congress. If Congress doesn't like how the court interprets a statute, they can rewrite the statute, at least in theory. Practically speaking, it's hard to get Congress to agree to rewrite an old statute, but at least there's a way to do it. With constitutions, the only way to overrule a court is an amendment process, which has been, which was made the Constitution almost impossible, right? The Constitution's been amended 17 times since the initial Bill of Rights, right, in over 200 years, two of them canceled each other out with prohibition, right? So very few amendments, very difficult to get done. So that's the argument of the anti-federalists. Now, the response from Hamilton in the Federalist Papers, and Federalist 78 is one of the most famous Federalist Papers, at least from the law school perspective, we focus on quite a bit, right? Hamilton says, "The judiciary, from the nature of its functions, will always be the least dangerous to the political rights of the Constitution. It'll be in the least capacity to annoy or injure them," right? So he says, "Look, Congress controls the funding, right? They have the money. They can decide how we spend the money. The president controls the military, right? The judiciary has no influence over either the sword or the purse, no direction either of the strength or the wealth of society, and can take no active resolution whatever. It may truly be said to have neither force nor will, but merely judgment," right? No force, no will, just judgments, right? So in his view, in Hamilton's view, in the view of the Federalists, right, the judiciary is beyond comparison the weakest of the three departments of government, right? So Hamilton's point is, judges don't make the law, right? So there's less of a threat for them to society. And besides, Hamilton says, "We can't have a limited Constitution, a Constitution that limits congressional powers, without a judiciary," right? If we say Congress, you only have certain powers, you can only exercise certain powers over commerce, right, over spending, and they exceed those powers, who's going to stop the Congress, right? So we need the court to step in on behalf of the people and protect us from our elected officials, right? Because otherwise, the Constitution is no limit at all. And of course, Justice Marshall in Marv versus Madison makes basically the same argument, basically cribs from Federalist 78, and says, "Here's the defense of why the court has to sometimes strike down acts of Congress," right? Because Congress might exceed the powers that were granted to it by the people, okay? So that's the core debate of the founding, is the court too powerful or is it the weakest branch of government? So who was right? So I think many people today would say Hamilton's won out, right? After all, the Constitution was adopted, right? We make musicals about him, right? So seemingly, Hamilton has won out this argument. We don't even know for sure who Brutus was, right? We suspect it was a New York state judge, his name is Robert Yates, but that name's kind of faded in history. To a certain extent, some aspects of that debate continue today about how we think of the court. Now, judges, of course, insist that they do no politics, right? Politics plays no role in their decisions. Justices claim that they're judges, they're making legal decisions, not politicians making policy decisions, right? So, for example, in 2018, Justice Roberts says, "We don't have Obama judges or Trump judges, Bush judges or Clinton judges," right? In other words, we're just doing law, and there's no difference between a Trump judge or a Clinton judge or an Obama judge. During his confirmation hearing, when he was asked about the role of the judge, he said, "We're umpires, right? I'm just there to call balls and strikes, not set my own policy," right? Other people are the players, we're umpires. Now, sometimes behind closed doors, we do get a bit of a different story. So Justice William Brennan used to routinely give his new clerks advice about the most important rule on Supreme Court, and he said, "The rule is not, you know, studying law or making sure you have a sound basis or precedent for your decision." He said, "It's the rule of five, right? If you have five votes, you can get whatever outcome you want," right? Now, to me, that sounds like political advice, right? This is a political veto, not a court of law, right? But that's still an aspect, the same kind of debate that you saw at the founding. I will let you make the call on whether the Supreme Court is the least or most powerful branch. To give you my view on it, I want to jump forward a couple hundred years to me going to law school. So I went to law school in 2001, not that long ago, right, 20 years ago, and the constitutional law that I learned in law school, that I spent, you know, certainly first semester of constitutional law, was a required course for everybody, and then I took a lot of constitutional law classes in the early, because I really enjoyed constitutional law. I enjoyed the fuzziness and the vagueness of it, that there's no kind of clear, right answers, that we can spend, you know, a full year looking at the word "speech" and deciding whether or not, you know, baking a cake is that speech, right? Raising a flag is that speech, right? So I really enjoyed that piece. Since then, since I went to law school, there have been no constitutional amendments, there's been no change to the text of the Constitution, and yet constitutional law today, as I teach it, looks nothing like constitutional law when I learned it in 20 years ago, right? So when I graduated in 2004, we learned there's almost complete deference to executive agencies by the court, right? If there's an administrative ruling, there's no constitutional limit to what an executive agency can really do. There's something known as Chevron deference. You defer to the agency. If there's a statute that says EPA, you go write a rule about clean water. If they write a rule that nobody likes, we're stuck with that rule. Today, the court has come up with a number of new doctrines, I would say made-up doctrines, but newly discovered doctrines, like the major question doctrine, and others, where the court now has taken on quite a bit of power, and the speculation is that the Chevron doctrine will be overruled as well, that the court will now review agency decisions and have the power to strike them down. Now, of course, Congress can go back and rewrite the Clean Air Act to make it better, right? But that's not what's going to happen. As a law student, I learned that in our First Amendment class, that the only government aid that can be provided by the government to a school is books, right? Maybe busing. There's very limited things that state governments can actually give to a religious institution. As you just heard from Professor Melcher, that law has flipped entirely the other way. Not only can governments provide things to private religious schools, they must do it, right? So as I was learning the law, we spent a lot of time looking, "Okay, can they provide a microscope, right? Can they provide, what's like a book?" Right? Today, it's the other way around, right? In 2004, right, we spent quite a bit of time reading Roe, reading the Casey decision, learning about the trimester framer from Roe, the viability line in Casey. That was the law. Today, we know that the Constitution provides no right, no special protection to women seeking abortions, right? It is entirely a matter of state law. In 2004, the First Amendment didn't prohibit states from requiring their own workers who receive benefits from a collective bargaining agreement to pay union fees, right? A few years ago, the court said, "Nope, the First Amendment does prohibit requiring workers to pay union fees if they don't want to join the union." We spent virtually no time on the Second Amendment, right? The Second Amendment at that time was thought only to apply to weapons used by the militia and when used for militia purposes, right? Those are the first words of the Second Amendment. The conservative justice Warren Burger, at that time, one of the more conservative justices we had on the court, said that individual rights reading of the Second Amendment is the greatest fraud on the American people. Today, the Second applies to weapons that are in common use, it's not limited to the militia, right? Restrictions are, basically, all restrictions are questionable after Bruin, they have to be bound in history. There's no analysis of whether or not there's a good or bad reason for regulation, right? You have to look historically, and it's the kind of regulation that has historically been permitted, and the history can be kind of cherry-picked, right? Because in Bruin, there was a long history of that kind of regulation. Of course, that history's not relevant, that's not the history we really care about, right? In 2004, states criminalized private same-sex intimate relations in the privacy of their own home. Today, now we have a right to private sexual relations. In 2004, same-sex marriage was not a constitutional right. Today, it is a constitutional right. Campaign finance law, right, changed completely since I graduated from law school. There's no question that other constitutional rights may disappear, may be created, right, depending on how you see what a right is. I think there's little question affirmative action will no longer be permitted in college admissions. Now, some of these decisions I agree with, some of them I don't agree with, some of them I like, some of them I dislike, but I just want to point out, these are examples of fundamental changes in the basic structure of our government, right? The most important rights that apply to millions of people, that affect all of us, that happened without any change in the text, any change in the structure of the Constitution. There's no new discovery of some record, "Oh yeah, here's what Madison really thought about violent video games," or "People baking cakes," right? None of that has happened in the last 20 years since I graduated from law school, right? The only thing that has changed is who's on the court, right? Some people died at the right or wrong times, right? Some people didn't retire at the right or wrong times, right? All that has changed is the ideology, the partisan affiliation, the values of the people who are on the court. If judges make such substantial changes in the law due only to their views, their political, personal preference, can we really say the Supreme Court is doing anything other than policy, right? Is it really doing anything different than what the legislature or the president are doing, right? Do we really have a rule of law or a rule of man, right? And every area of our life, every area of politics, is now in the hands of the court. Now, Alexis de Tocqueville, writing in the 19th century, said, "There's hardly a political question in the United States which does not sooner or later turn into a judicial one." Now, back then, actually, very few issues reached the Supreme Court. Supreme Court decided not too many cases, and many of these doctrines really developed in the 20th century. But today, almost any issue you can think of, the Supreme Court will have the final say on it, right? Think about any kind of major policy debate we'll have. Think about healthcare, right? The question wasn't, "Can Congress pass it?" Because after Congress passed the law and President Obama signed it, we had to wait for the court to decide, would they uphold the law? And by a five-to-four vote, with Justice Roberts saying the majority, the court decided to uphold that law. But the healthcare debate, the final say, was the court. The same is true with immigration, same is true with many COVID restrictions, right? The court struck some down, it upheld others, right? So environmental law, same-sex marriage, affirmative action, all of the major policy issues that affect society today are resolved at the last step by the Supreme Court. And text and history are really no constraint. And, you know, as I mentioned, that's not really surprising, right? Most of the really difficult issues that reach the Supreme Court don't have a right or wrong legal answer, right? You know, what did the framers think, or how did they understand about, you know, web design, right? Even if you make it at a general level, they didn't really think about those things, right? Or even if they did, they disagreed. Even originalists don't say, you know, "What would James Madison have thought about this? If we could, you know, freeze him, bring him back today and say, 'Okay, Madison, what do you think about this?'" No, originally, we don't look at that. We ask about, "What's a reasonable meaning of those words, right? How have the words been understood in society?" Well, most of the really difficult problems that the court faces can't be answered that way, right? There's no real legal tool, or there's lots of legal tools, that can let you reach whatever decision that you want to reach, right? So if it's not the text of the Constitution, if it's not the structure of the document or its history that decide how to resolve these cases, right, what is it? And my argument is that it's ideology, it's values, it's politics. There's no other way to resolve most of the really hard cases that Professor Melchior has talked about, other than to invoke those things, right? Okay. So now I get to my controversial recommendations. As you can probably tell, in my opinion, I think Brutus has the better of the arguments. The court is in fact maybe the most powerful branch in our government. The problem for me, though, is not that the court is powerful, or that maybe it's the most powerful institution in our democracy, that's fine. Somebody has to be the most powerful, because somebody has to have a final say on our laws, right? My objection is more to the structure of the Constitution, right? So my recusal proposal, my unpopular recusal proposal 10 years ago, was based on this idea that no judge can be a judge in their own case, and I continue to believe that to this day. So I have two proposals, two ideas that I want to raise. Now, the first one is actually, I think, less controversial, because you're raising in the question-and-answer session, and that's life tenure, right? So we give judges, Supreme Court justices, life tenure. We are the only country in the world, as far as I know, who give life tenure to serve in the state, on the nation's highest court. As far as I know, no other democracy, maybe Iceland, I've heard, but no other democracy gives us judges that much protection and that much independence. I don't believe that much independence for so long is necessary. I believe it should serve a single term, one term of 10, 15, 18. It can be as long as necessary to recruit qualified individuals onto the court, so they're not worried about appeasing law firms and thinking about their jobs down the line, although I don't think Supreme Court justices, even after an 18-year term, would have a hard time finding a job, but they should serve a single term, and it should be somewhat limited. I would say about 10, but I've seen proposals as long as 18. One of the values of that, that eliminates the kind of rancor and pressure with each appointment, right? The kind of, the momentous monumental fight that we have each time there's an opening in the court, because each one is so meaningful, and there may not be another one for decades. It eliminates the incentives to appoint the youngest person possible, because you want to leave your legacy, and you want to get somebody who's really committed to your cause to be deciding in your favor for 30, 40, 50 years, right? We think about Justice Thomas, right? He's been on the court for a long time. Justice Kennedy was maybe the most powerful person in the country for 40 years, right? Somebody appointed by President Reagan, served in the court for 40 years, he was a swing vote, the fifth vote, in so many cases, right? When lawyers prepare for argument at the court, it was, "Okay, we know how eight of them will come out, we've got to get the Kennedy vote," right? I think that's a problem, that somebody in a democracy, right, in a republican form of government, has that much power for so long. So I think there's no real benefit to life tenure and a lot of disadvantages to having somebody serve in the court for that long. All right. My second idea, and this is the really controversial one. If I'm right, that values play a key role, maybe even the only role, in how judges decide cases, and if you agree with me that ideology and partisanship are important, are a factor in judicial decision-making, then I hope you'll agree with me at least one more basic tenet, that the policymaking institutions in a democracy, people that make laws, people that impose their ideology on the people, should be accountable to the people, right? That's a core underlying principle of a republican form of government. That's what republic is, right? People who make laws are accountable to the people. The solution to that is judicial elections, right? If judges are making law in the same way, using their ideology and their values as congressmen, as presidents, why shouldn't they also be accountable to the people in how they're selected, right? Now, I know for a lot of people in this room, judicial elections sound like a crazy idea. You should know that many states elect judges, right? In fact, most states elect their judges, about 38 states have judicial elections. New England is an exception to that, so Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts are an exception. As the new states came into the Union, new states often came in with elections. Most judges in the United States have to run for office, either to at least retain their position or to get their position in the first place. Now, are elections perfect? No, there's a lot of problems with elections, right? You're from Wisconsin, Professor Melchior. Wisconsin has some of the most contentious judicial elections in the country. They are pitched hard.
That's a really polite term.
I mean, they're all-out battles with lots of money raised, and Republican-Democrats is very close, and they're, it's, you know, one-vote difference in the court really swings the law. There's a number of potential issues, right? So one issue with elections, and one real concern with elections for judges, is impartiality, right? The people who are going to spend money on elections are going to be those who really care about who's going to be on the court, right? So we've seen in the states, it's the law firms that appear at the court a lot, they spend a lot of money on the elections, and the parties that are going to appear in the court a lot, they spend a lot of money on elections, right? So if they spend a lot of money on elections, and then judges hear their cases, that's a problem. Now, some of my earlier recusal suggestions are ways to address some of that. I think those campaign finance rules, many of which the court has struck down at this point, are ways to address that, right? But that is a problem that I recognize and a problem that we'd have to address. Another one is independence, right? Independence is a hard concept to think about. We want judges to be independent, right? On the other hand, they should be accountable to somebody, right? So I understand that concern with elections is that to the extent that we want the court to be protecting minority rights against the majority, elections are a problem, right? And in Federalist 78, there's this odd tension, because Hamilton says there's two things the court should be doing, right? The one thing the court should be doing is protecting the people, the majorities, against Congress, against their state legislatures, against elected officials. So it's the court on behalf of the people stopping elected officials. The other thing the court should be doing is protecting minorities against the people, against majority oppression. Now, those two roles are very different, and I would say the person doing those two jobs should be selected in different ways, right? And so it's a tension that's hard to reconcile, but there is a concern about independence with judicial elections. And then for others, it's just a general unseemliness of judges running for office, right? The judges are campaigning, they're maybe making commitments, maybe making promises, maybe announcing their views, you know, "Here's what I think of an abortion." We're not seeing a process in confirmations now, I think it's a sham, but, you know, where judges say, "I can't..." But, you know, where judges say, I can't say anything about any legal issue, because it might come in front of me at some point. Now, I don't think it's unethical for a judge to say what they think about a legal issue. Many judges have expressed those views in Law Review articles, if they're academic, in their previous opinions. But since the Ginsburg confirmation, after the failed Board confirmation, that has been the party line. Right? I can't say anything about a legal issue, because it might come in front of me. And so if we think that's the right ethical approach, there is some unseamliness to campaigning and saying, here's where I am on affirmative action. Here's where I am on same-sex marriage, or on abortion. Right? Is that a bad thing or a good thing? We can discuss that, certainly in the question and answer session as well. But at the end of the day, I do think it's easier to address those problems than to live in a system where the most powerful policymaking institution in our government is not accountable to the people in any way. And in some ways, many of those problems exist today, we just don't know about them. Right? So obviously, in the last few months, we had a lot of news about Justice Thomas, and about his close connections with donors, and some ethics issues that he's faced. You asked about what justices do in the summer, that they mostly travel to Europe, funded by law schools that are trying to get in their good graces, or private interests, or the Federal Society. So, you know, the impartiality concern, it's not like the justices today are some kind of platonic guardians who are separate from society. They all have connections. They all live in DC, right? They all have close contacts with the government and wealthy donors. And so the kinds of impartiality concerns that exist with elections exist today anyway. They're just below the radar, right? We just don't know about them. And yes, in elections, they will come out more. We'll know that, you know, this law firm campaigned for this justice, and now they're appearing at the court. Right? And that's a more obvious conflict of interest than the ones that we have seen. Is this an attack on the courts? No, I don't think so, or at least not at all the courts, really just at the Supreme Court. And here's why I think the Supreme Court is different than all the other courts. The Supreme Court is, in the words of one of my colleagues, is not a court at all. Right? We call it a court, but really what they're doing is more like law, more like policy. Right? There's no real binding precedent that controls the court. They don't like a previous decision, they can just overrule it. Right? Lower courts have to follow decisions by other judges. The Supreme Court doesn't. It can say, we decided something 10 years ago, we don't like it today. Just scrap it. There's no review of their decisions, unlike all the lower courts. And the bulk of the court's cases that it hears are really difficult cases that don't have a clear answer, right? So many cases that go to the lower courts, they're settled, they're resolved, or oftentimes, there's a clear legal answer to resolve them. The case that gets to the Supreme Court are ones that don't have that answer. Right? They're not, they would have been resolved by that point, through district court litigation, through appellate litigation. But then they get to the court, what the court is doing is not really law, at least not law in the way that we think of it. Right? There's no constraints, and it has the tools to reach whatever decision that it wants. Right? And when it doesn't, it can make up new tools, as I mentioned with the major question doctrine. Right? So, you know, early in the nation's history, starting with Marbury versus Madison, which is the case where the court really established its power of judicial review, the court viewed itself as an equal partner in this enterprise of constitutional law and interpretation. Really, starting in the late 1950s, the court adopted the view that it's supreme, that the court is the one that decides what a certain provision means, and nobody else's interpretation of speech, or bearing arms, or due process really matters. Right? What the court says, that is what the Constitution means. That view, which is known as judicial supremacy, I think does put the court above the other branches of our government. So I know I have an uphill battle. I know that many people, including probably all of my colleagues at the law school, and most lawyers and law professors, reject the idea of elections. They cling to the idea that constitutional decisions are based on a legal principle, and the judges are applying traditional legal tools, like text, and history, and structure, and precedent, to reach some correct outcomes. But I think the evidence is pretty overwhelming, that those decisions are really more about values and ideology. And I think if we can recognize that, we can have a meaningful conversation about how to reform the court to be more in line with what the framers envisioned. So that's all I have for now. So I welcome your questions. And if you have questions for Professor Meltzer as well, feel free to throw them out, and we can tag-team them.
I'd be curious to hear, from a historical perspective, what has happened with the docket selection process? Because I'm of the impression that the case selection and the timing of the cases is very much manipulated currently to inflame the culture wars.
Yeah, so I think there's one huge change in the court's docket selection. That's actually a really important part of this argument that I left out. So there was, for a long time, the court had a mandatory docket. It had to hear certain cases, and it couldn't set its own agenda. It couldn't say, you know what, we're going to go into abortion and affirmative action. That's what we really want to decide. Congress gave the court the power to decide which case it's going to take, so the cert process, right? So they have, the court receives hundreds, thousands of certiorari petitions every year. And some are fairly mundane issues, you know, tax issues and business issues, you know, nitty-gritty of ERISA, right? But many of them are these kind of fundamental, ground-shifting constitutional decisions that have divided society. And now the court takes 75, it used to be over 100, now it's 75 or so cases every year. Right? And they can pick and choose the ones that they're really most interested in and most excited about. And so, again, from the idea of, you know, is this a judicial body? Or is this a lawmaking organ? That, to me, sounds like a lawmaking organ, right? We decide what issues we care about, and we take those issues, and we issue proclamations of what the law for the United States will be on those issues. So I think that kind of selection process is a major change in the court. Now, the timing, you know, so the court hears cases starting in October throughout the year, and take a summer break. Right? I think Justice Roberts joked that kindergarteners and Supreme Court justices are the only ones that get a summer vacation. Right? Now, there are some other professions as well, but, you know, the courts, the number of cases that they've heard declines, and they do announce their major decisions in June. I'm not sure if it's, I don't know if it makes a difference if the abortion decision or affirmative action decision was announced in January or February or June. So the timing doesn't worry me as much as the selection of your cases, and really limiting the docket to so few decisions, and leaving the lower courts to decide and figure out what those things mean. You know, the Bruin decision just says, you know, strikes down the New York law, and says regulations that states can have on weapons have to be grounded in history. Lower courts, you decide, right? Felon, you know, can felons own guns? Can you bring it to sensitive places? Can you bring it to Times Square, to churches? Lower courts, you do the history. Most judges aren't historians, right? It's a hard history to do. So I think the court deciding such a grand proclamation without laying out some guidelines, I think is also problematic.
Can I just follow that?
Yeah.
But the shadow docket.
Yeah. So to those of you who haven't been following this, so the shadow docket, this has existed for a long time, but there is, you know, the most of the cases that we talk about are the merits docket. You know, there's a brief file, long briefing process, and arguments that are heard, and the court issues a reasoned decision after oral argument from both sides. And then there's the cases that are on the shadow docket that don't have any of that process. They're usually emergency cases. We saw a lot of them during COVID, where there's a lower court decision, a party says, you've got to overrule the decision, right? This is an emergency, you've got to reinstate some legislation. And the court can decide the case on very limited briefing with no oral arguments at all. Right? Now, that has existed for a long time, it's gotten a lot more attention. It's a term that was coined by a professor at Chicago Law School, which sounds more ominous than I think it is. It does suggest that the court can, you know, decide some cases without a ton of input, and maybe a little bit less publicly. Right? I mean, to the extent that we care about the court's visibility and transparency, the shadow docket somewhat undermines that, because there's less argument. Cameras in the courtroom, right, are another kind of controversial topic that is in the same kind of realm. Right? How much should the people know, or do the people know about the work of the court? So the shadow docket, I think, what the idea behind is to decide cases quickly without having to go through a full process, that has to exist at some point. Because some decisions have to be made really quickly, maybe without a full deliberative process that takes from October to June to decide the case. But there have been some justices that have questioned whether or not what the court has called emergencies really are emergencies. Justice Barrett, actually, has pushed back, said, look, let's leave the lower court decision in place, and no one's going to die. Let's decide the case in the kind of standard course of process.
Traditionally, it was for death penalty cases.
That's the most common one.
And there's been an expansion of it more recently.
Exactly, yeah. And with COVID, we saw a lot of those, because you'd have a state put in place a COVID restriction, you'd have a justice, a judge in the lower court maybe strike it down, and the state says, hey, wait a minute, people will actually die unless you reinstate the restriction. Right? So the court, you tell us right now what we can and can't do. So that is the purpose of the shadow docket, to allow the court a process to resolve those kinds of cases. Yeah?
So I agree that the way we appoint our Supreme Court is absolutely horrendous to the idea of popular sovereignty. But I'm not on board fully with direct elections, because I am of the opinion that the Supreme Court should be separate from policy decisions. And elections are bound to have politicians running for these positions, making big promises that they'll feel obligated to keep in the case they want to be elected again, or in case they want to go into a different field of politics after. So I am a huge supporter of the idea of certition, random selection of our judges from qualified candidates. And I'm just wondering if you have any ideas or thoughts about that.
Yeah. Couple things I just want to address. So you said, you know, Supreme Court should be separate from politics. I mean, that is the common view. I guess the question I would ask is, can they be, right? And are they being? Right? If you look at these cases, let's look at the hard cases, right? Can we decide, does the phrase "due process of law" in the Constitution written 200 years ago, right, does it protect abortion or same-sex marriage? If you think it has a legal answer that can be separated from politics or values, then I would agree with you. I just don't think that's possible. I don't think there is a law versus politics, and I don't think we should pretend that there's somebody doing law instead of doing politics. I think to decide those kinds of questions, that is politics all the way down. You also mentioned, you're thinking about, you know, campaigning to keep their jobs. Now, I will say, with the term, if it's just one, 10, 15-year term, they don't have to think about keeping their jobs. And in most states, even the ones that don't elect judges, like Maine doesn't elect its Supreme Court justices, they serve seven-year terms. Right? Now, there's a norm here that you're going to be reappointed, but you still have to think about how you decide cases, because the governor will decide whether you're going to be reappointed as well. So the life tenure that exists at the federal level doesn't exist anywhere else, and yet we accept that some of that thinking is okay. Now, the last piece, the kind of, the core of your question is, this idea of creating a pool. Sometimes people will say, just have circuit courts, and then for the Supreme Court, you just pick, maybe randomly, for a year, or for a sitting, nine, 11, 13, whatever the number is of circuit court justices, maybe some retired justices could be in that pool. Right? So I think that has some advantages, right? Because then you're not a Supreme Court justice for life, right? You serve a short term, and you see yourself rising from a district court judge or a circuit court judge, where you're doing more kind of judging. I think that's a plus. On the other hand, deciding the cases still has to be done somehow. Right? And those people are also appointed through a political process. So I think what happens now is the Supreme Court battles are massive. Right? And I think they're politics all the way down. Circuit court battles are a little bit less so, because we know those justices don't have quite as much power. Although, you know, DC Circuit, they're most likely to be the next ones in line for the Supreme Court, so those are the most heated ones. And then district court, there's a lot less battle, because I would say they're doing a lot less politics. Right? Most of the district court judges' work is kind of the nuts and bolts of what lawyers would do, you know, motion practice, right? So there's a lot less policymaking there. If those are going to be the people that decide abortion randomly, I think then those become the bigger battles. Right? So I don't know if you can avoid, now, maybe there's more of those battles, maybe they're slightly less heated, but I don't know if you can avoid, if it's going to be a judge who decides what our immigration policy is, then the battle about that judge, I think, will be a battle. Right? So I don't know if you can avoid that piece if you're going to maintain the current structure where it's the Senate, a political body, reviewing another politician's nominations. Yeah, in the back. Yeah, yep.
I was thinking about the 2000 election case, and they ruled, if I remember right, that that didn't set a precedent. And here they were deciding the president, and yet they said, there's no precedent. How would they, you could do that?
Well, the court can say whatever it wants. This is Bush v. Gore, which, you know, so I went to law school in 2001. That was like the defining case that we thought, this is going to break the Supreme Court. People were so passionate about it. I'd have students say, like, what, Bush v. Gore? I heard something about this. But it's before their time, it just makes me feel very old. But yeah, so, you know, this goes to the power of the court to create doctrines and precedents, and ignore them if they don't like them. Right? So Bush v. Gore created some odd rule about recounts for this election. The court said, look, this is for this election only. Right? Don't worry about this, it won't affect future elections. Now, of course, the court can cite Bush v. Gore if it wants to, if it likes the principles in that case. It's not bound by saying it's only valid for this case only. And in fact, there's a lot of debate right now. One of the cases you didn't discuss, but it's a major case, is the independent legislature theory. Right? This idea that courts, state courts, have no say in state elections, because it's the legislature that should be the one that determines state election procedure. There was a hint of that in the Rehnquist opinion in Bush v. Gore, the Rehnquist concurrence. Now, they didn't get five votes at the time, right? But it's a really controversial theory. Some would say nonsensical theory of law, right? But the court seems to be bringing it back, or bringing threads of it back. Right? So the court decides for itself what's precedent and for how long. Right? There's no need to tell, there's no legal principle behind it. Right? The court can say, you know what, we think this was egregiously wrong. Right? Roe v. Wade was wrong, just like Plessy was wrong, we're going to overrule it. And if it thinks it's right, no, we're sticking with precedent, we're bound by it. It's all just policy at the court. Yeah? Yep?
I'm curious whether you would accept or reject the premise that the court has become more political in recent years? Because I think many people, I think the widespread perception is that it has become more partisan. And I'm thinking especially about things like strategic retirements. Like, I don't think that was as common back in the day. I mean, what if somebody like Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who insisted on not retiring strategically, even though many Democrats said she should? At least some did. Or just things like confirmation of Supreme Court justices. I mean, it seems like they're all coming down with a very close vote now, whereas they used to be confirmed.
Yeah, like Scalia and Ginsburg were both basically unanimous.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, I agree with pretty much everything you said, but just, I want to play devil's advocate a little bit. What does that do to your, I mean, do you accept or reject that premise? And what does that do to your kind of thesis? Because we didn't have judicial elections back then, so somebody might say, hey, there's another, there are other ways we can give back to a more civil or less political court.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. I do think it's gotten a lot more attention, the kind of politics and the nature of the judicial decisions, how closely divided they are. Now, it's been that way, I think, for a very long time. I mean, the Board confirmation was in the early 80s, and really, starting with Nixon, a lot of pushback against the Warren Court, when originalism is born. So, you know, how far back do I want to go? I'm not sure. I guess what I will say is, if you go back to 1803, right, founding of this country, and Marbury versus Madison, right? So, you know, if you think about the story back there, right? So you have this election where you had the Federalists in power. Back then, there weren't really a party in the outset, right? So you have President Washington, President Adams. But then the Jeffersonian Republicans start dominating, right? And you have Jefferson, Jefferson and Burr kind of splitting the votes, but Jefferson winning that election in 1800, and a clear shift in the nation in kind of its view of politics, and a shift towards the Republican Party of that time. And on his way out, President Adams appoints a whole bunch of judges to say, you know what, this is going to be the Federalist stronghold. This is where we're going to have some input. Justice Marshall is a Federalist judge. And Marv versus Madison writes this kind of fairly aggressive opinion criticizing Thomas Jefferson for what he's doing. So even back then, there's a lot of politics. And the president understands that the court does have a lot of power. And that while the Republicans are winning these elections and the country's come around to the more Jeffersonian, more agrarian model of society at that time, the Federalists say the courts are where we're going to instill ourselves and try to limit their agenda. So even then, it's still very political. And even they recognize that judges have a lot of political power. So maybe we talk about it a little bit differently today, maybe it's more highlighted. But I don't think it's possible to separate politics from law, even at the time of the founding. And that's why, you know, I read Federal 78. I think it's beautifully written. But I question whether that theory actually makes sense in practice. Or at least for the Supreme Court justice, maybe for lower courts, but not for policymaking courts like the Supreme Court.
I'd like to go back into Mr. Peabody's Wayback Machine and go back to 1924 when, man, from my home state, Robert LaFollette ran as the Progressive Party candidate for president and the Progressive Party platform and his campaign argued, all federal judges should, we should amend the Constitution. All federal judges should have a term no longer than 10 years. And that this should be a popular, nonpartisan ballot. So that's very much like what you're talking about from 100 years ago. What would America and American jurisprudence look like if some sort of miracle had happened and he beats Coolidge and gets elected and gets this through? And it gets a, how would America look different now if we'd had something? I'm not saying it's good or bad, but that's something that I've often wondered. How would America look different?
Yeah, so it's hard to know for sure, right? So I would suspect the court's decisions would be more aligned with majority will, right? Now, somebody might say to me, they're actually fairly aligned on majority will anyway, right? So whenever the court goes really far astray, they're slapped back, right? So we saw that a little bit with the New Deal era. Saw a bit with post-Civil War era as well. So the court makes up new rights, like the economic liberties that the court came up with during the Lochner era, and striking down the New Deal legislation. Yes, Roosevelt's proposal was unpopular even among his own party, but it got things done, right? The court said, you know what? We recognize that we're a little bit far astray from public opinion and fell somewhat back in line. And so, yes, there's some decisions now, we might say, they're against the majority, right? So abortion decision, I think the numbers suggest that majority disagree with the court's decision there. Maybe Citizens United, maybe a few others, right? But the court, some argue, is pretty careful about staying within some sort of margins of where the people are. And they can't just have wild, crazy theories. And so maybe the world wouldn't be all that different. But I think the court would be somewhat more representative. I think the decisions would be more representative of where the people are at that time, right? And that's, I think, my biggest complaint is, you know, looking at the court where Justice Stevens served for 40-plus years, right? Kennedy served for 40-plus years. I just don't think people with that much power should serve for that long, right? People's views have changed. Our views of the Constitution have changed. And I think the court should be more accountable. So I think that's the biggest change you would make. I think the process would be a little bit different. The court would feel more emboldened, more empowered to think about accountability and representativeness. And in fact, you know, when you think about judicial elections in the states. So, you know, at the outset, of course, the federal constitution has the appointments process. And the first few states that come in mirror that, right? The first states say, yeah, that's the way you pick judges. That's what we did in England, right? It's the parliament that picks the judges, right? President, the legislature. And what happens is those judges get closer and closer to state politics. They get closer and closer to the moneyed interests. And there's a populist movement that says, you know what? We need more independence. We want more independent judges. And to get that, we're going to have elections. Now, today, we think of elections as counter-independent, right? You're accountable to the people. And it's true, but in the other model where you're appointed by the state legislature and you're thinking about keeping the governor happy, you're thinking about those people, right? And so judicial elections are brought in to give more independence and credence to the court and to give them that power to be more representative of the people. To give them that legitimacy that the courts need to say, you know what? We're going to strike down this active legislature because we know the people just as well, right? We're elected, we campaigned for office, and we get to know what the people think, just like you, the other elected officials do.
So I just want to clarify a bit more when you say election. Would you like change how many people are on this Supreme Court for the election? Would it be elected through like proportional representation or what we use now, which is when it takes all? Would you have the chief justice be elected separate from the court, stuff like that?
You know, I haven't thought through all of the details. I mean, so I like popular elections, general elections, right? So I would say there's no district, you know, there's no West Coast seat on the court, an East Coast seat. You run for office kind of nationwide. As far as a Supreme Court justice, I don't know if it's a separate seat or if it's the justices select one of their own to be the chief justice. But I haven't thought through that piece. What were the other parts of that question?
So proportional representation, so like if one group of, like one faction gets 30%, they get 30% of the seats?
No, yeah, national elections, I don't like the electoral college either. So I would say popular national elections is just the way to do it.
Would you add more seats?
Well, so that wouldn't be necessary. Now, you might want to add more seats to give the court more capacity. Or if you think the court really doesn't have the capacity to decide as many cases as it should be deciding because of the number nine, sure, we could add more seats. But the discussion we're having now about adding more seats to negate, you know, what happened with the Gorsuch selection, the Barrett selection, that just wouldn't be necessary in a world where we had elections. Now, there'd be a process to phase, this is all a pipe dream, of course, right? We need a constitutional amendment to make this happen, and that would never happen. We'd have to have a process. And even for term limits, where I think more people are on board, we would have to have some process for what happens to the current life-appointed justices and how to transition to the eight, 10, 12, 18-year terms. But, you know, I like having an odd number of justices. I think people say, let's go to an even number, which we actually had at some point. And if the court's split, then the lower court's decision stands, right? But as far as the number of justices, I don't have a strong view on that. I think that should be tied to workload rather than outcomes.
I think you kind of answered my last bit of that, but I can't remember exactly because you said justice, not chief justice. But should the chief justice be elected in a separate thing? Like, it could even be like they're elected at the same time, but then whoever's willing to run for it says, hey, I'm willing to run. And then we have a separate election for that. Or do you think that should be done internally?
Yeah, I don't know. I have not thought about the chief justice piece at all. I would say it makes sense for it to be done internally, just because that's how we run our committees. You know, we have a committee and then, all right, let's pick a chair of this committee. But, you know, I'm not so sure. I have to think that through.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, so with the idea, you can touch on a little bit, with the idea of 10 to 18-year terms and the idea of having elections, that would lead a lot of new and diverse ideas to be going in and out of the court system. Whereas right now, when courts, when judges are appointed, you can almost expect what the outcome of new laws are going to be, at this time being more conservative. But that might change with the new ideas going in and out. Do you think that that would be positive or negative for the overall United States with the constant inconsistency of the side of the right and left of the new laws? Would that be good or bad?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, right? Because one of the arguments in favor of life tenure is the stability argument. That, like, what do we think? You know, if you were there for 50 years, that's your view on that issue. And so, yes, you might be stuck with Plessy for a really long time, but then you also get Brown for a really long time, right? I guess my question back would be, do you think the system works well now? Or is it better to have kind of more change? I guess I would say I'm okay with a little bit less stability if the court and the decision are more responsive to the American people, right? And that is the trade-off, right? Because you are going to have, let's say, the country's divided and you have a closely divided court. And there's a shift from year to year, somebody dies or retires. And you have the court swinging, five to four, one way or the other way. The law could change, right? And of course, there's still the precedent idea. So the court might still respect previous decisions or chooses to do so. But the law might change. But for me, that's not necessarily a bad thing, or at least not as bad as having a decision that is no longer reflective of where the people are and being stuck with it for a really long time, right? So I'm 45 years old. In my lifetime, we have not had a liberal, a liberal court, right? Even the population is about 50/50, right? Even though Democrats have won a number of elections for president and have controlled the Senate and the House. But as a matter of chance and timely retirements and political hardball, constitutional hardball of Mitch McConnell, right? We have had a conservative court for my entire life, for your entire lives. I think that's problematic, right? Because that court does not reflect what we think of our Constitution, of our law. And so I'm willing to trade off that stability for more representativeness. Anybody else?
So do you have any rebuttals or more to add to any of the cases that Professor Malcher?
No, I think that was a great summary. They're really hard cases to cover, you know? They're hard cases to talk about because some of these issues, especially abortion, affirmative action, I mean, they're just so personal to people, right? So covering them with our law students is a real challenge, right? And to me, this kind of shows how important the work of the court is and how political the work of the court is, right? Because, you know, we think of, there's this idea, and sometimes judges perpetuate it, is, you know, I take a statute. I take the Constitution. I lay them against each other. All right, matches up. That works well. Like, yeah, if that's what the court was doing, some kind of technical exercise, then it's really easy, right? And sometimes Justice Roberts, you know, the balls and strikes thing. Yeah, I watch a baseball game and I can see the overlay of the computer and I can see if it's a ball or a strike. There's no judgment in that, but nothing that the court does.
Some might like them to be more to the left or more to the right.
Yeah, yeah. But nothing that the court does, none of the decisions that you talked about, even the nine-zero ones are calling balls and strikes, right? There's a value judgment that you have to make in any of those decisions. And so I think they're all really hard cases, whether they're five-four or nine-zero. And I agree completely that affirmative action case is going to come down the way Professor Malcher expects it to come down. And colleges will struggle at first, I think, to yield diverse classes. Have to come up with different ways to try to identify diversity and kind of get to the critical mass that they've been trying to get to. But yeah, I think there'll be a lot of challenges for universities who care about bringing diverse class.
And I think, though, well, we're already seeing some of that in law schools where you've got groups like CLEO that try and cultivate students of color, first generation, all those kinds of things. I suspect what you'll see, because colleges want a diverse set of people. Among them to have different perspectives. And that's a lot of how they ruled on the Ballinger cases in the first place. Minority students need to have a critical mass of these people. I think what's going to happen is they're going to do more recruitment, more things that aren't as rigid, that don't look as formulaic, that we're going to do more recruitment, say, for law schools at HBCUs or do some of the other things. On the other hand, you know, certainly when the University of Texas moved away from affirmative action, it led to a really large drop in their percentage of students of color. But I think the effect, I think colleges have been anticipating this would happen for a long, long time. I think they have ideas. I think it will be less dramatic in outcome than it looks like right now. I think that they'll be adaptable in some way and move around that. Plus, he'll tell you what he really thought of what I meant to say the minute I drive.
California, California actually banned affirmative action in.
The word Connerly proposition.
In California, right? And, you know, Berkeley and other schools, they saw a drop, but they were able to bring those numbers back up. But it's a fairly diverse state system at UCLA and UC Berkeley.
And where it really matters is those really super competitive schools. You know, community colleges, that's where, if you have an open admissions school. I taught for three years at Cleveland State, which at the time was an open admissions university. Meaning, if you had a high school diploma from Ohio, it didn't mean you could get into the law school or the engineering school, but you could get in. Those kind of schools, it's going to be less of an issue. When we look at these cases, they're always very high prestige cases. And that's a lot of why there's all this pressure on them. That there's just a whole lot more people that want to go to Harvard Law School or want to go to the University of North Carolina than there are seats. I mean, it's almost inevitable that you're going to have pushback on a lot of these kinds of things. And part of what baked it in, I think, was O'Connor's ruling years ago on affirmative action where she essentially said, we'll let this stand for now, but 25 years from now, I really hope we're not doing this. And that she sort of said, well, it's past that 25 years. And I think that kind of, not exactly a time bomb, but it kind of put a little bit of an expiration date, I think, in the minds of some of the people on the court. And now they're so conservative, they'd go against it anyway.
Yeah. Well, one thing I'll just add, because the election idea is so unlikely. Thinking about kind of the right way for the court to interpret cases is maybe more aligned with my general idea. So when I was in law school, I was always somewhat skeptical of the judiciary, right? So there was still, there was still a lot of trust and faith in kind of that war in court remnants because a lot of the rights came about from the court. And so I would be in class and I would kind of challenge, you know, why is the court striking this down? Or why is the court deciding this way as opposed to the elected branches? And a lot of my classmates thought I was really, really conservative because I questioned many of the liberal rulings as well. And I was talking to one of my classmates after graduation that I worked in the Hillary Clinton campaign for New York State Senate. I said, wait a minute, you worked for Clinton skin? I thought you were really conservative. I said, no, I just questioned the court, right? I just don't know if the court should be the one to decide what those rights are because there's another branch that is more accountable to the people that I think is just as likely. Like, Congress is not perfect, right? State legislatures aren't perfect, right? But the court is just like to be wrong as it is to be right, right? So if we're going to trust one institution, it should be the more accountable one. And so, you know, I would advocate for more deference to the elected branches, right? So some have suggested that maybe it should require six votes or seven votes or even a unanimous decision before you strike down a statute, right? So some approach to judicial decision-making where unless the Constitution is absolutely clear that this Congress can't do something, the court should defer to the legislature, right? Now, there's not very many things that are very clear in the Constitution. The president must be 35, right? There's two senators from each state. And so some things that are very clear. And those things, I would say, Congress can't get around. But generally speaking, if it's a close call, if there's an argument on both sides, there should be a lot more deference by the court to the other branches. And so I think that's an approach that has been taken by Justice Frankfurt and a few others as well that I don't think is a partisan approach because it just depends on who's in the legislature, what law we're talking about. But I think it's consistent with the general theory that the court should have less power to make these kinds of decisions. And it should be our elected officials who decide what is the scope of our rights and what is our immigration policy, or is there our environmental policy, right? It shouldn't be the courts making those decisions.
Do you extend that to the states, though?
I would extend to the state, oh, you mean federal to the state.
Yeah, I mean, should the, you know, should the Supreme Court be hesitant to say, well, this is, whether it's a liberal state, well, should we let Massachusetts do this that they want to do? Or should we let Alabama do this that they want to do? Are you saying that courts should be restrained and say, well, I kind of want to let Massachusetts or Alabama or whoever it is do what they want to? Or do you only see that as a national thing? Do you follow what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, yes. Certainly deference to national mixed.
Well, certainly, you defer to states all the time.
Yeah, although some justices say, we can't defer to the states because we got to have a national policy on some things, right? So I would say yes. I would say there should be some deference to the states as well, unless the Constitution is clear, right? That's a pro-federalism argument, letting states decide their approaches and having, you know, Maine recognizing different rights than other states, right? But that's an approach that's consistent with lowering the power of the court, right? And which is kind of my general philosophy, that the Supreme Court has taken on too much onto itself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I want to thank both speakers. They've given us a lot to think about this morning.
It's fun.
And we have a custom now that we give our speakers a souvenir to take away, which is the.
It's a one-way bus ticket.
I have been wanting that for years. He's getting it.
Oh, that is awesome.
You both get one.
All right.
Thank you.
Interesting, but I've been lobbying for one of these for a long time. Awesome. They had a little Sea Dogs game years ago.
Yes.
And I got there too late to be one of the chosen few to get one, even though I was there an hour early, so.
Thank you once again, and hopefully you avail yourselves of the two speakers during lunchtime. So a couple of other pieces of business to take care of. I sort of wanted to wrap up by calling your attention to cartoons that's in progress. And it's from 1970. We're going back in the Wayback Machine.
Her block.
And it's partly to let you know that there has always been intention surrounding the Supreme Court. We go back in our Wayback Machine. There's lots of years we can go to.
I can go back to 1970.
Well, if you actually go back to 1969.
Okay, close enough.
President Johnson wanted to elevate Abe Fordus. Abe, Professor Malcher. President Johnson wanted to elevate Abe Fordus to chief justice of the Supreme Court. And that became a very contentious issue for a variety of reasons. Ethical reasons, policy reasons.
policy reasons, and that was rejected. And Margaret Chaysmith was one of the people who voted against Abe Fortis being elevated to justice of the Supreme Court. It was also tied into the issue of, it was a presidential election year, and whether President Johnson should be able to-- Well, it was 69, so yes, it would have been Nixon. But the issue with Fortis is he had been very close to President Johnson. And so then, there's a vacancy on the Supreme Court, and Clement Haynesworth is nominated by the president to be a new justice. And it was very much related to politics. For Nixon to get the nomination in 1968, he adopted what was called the Southern Strategy. If the Republicans were to start winning national elections after their drubbing in 1964, they looked at the electoral map and realized they needed to start switching, flipping states in the South. So one of the deals was, or one of the understandings, I shouldn't say deals, was that if the southern politicians supported Richard Nixon, that he would appoint southern judges to the Supreme Court. Clement Haynesworth, I believe, came from South Carolina. And there were issues over some of his rulings related to civil rights, and he was pretty anti-union as well. And so that nomination was rejected, and Margaret Chaysmith, even though she was a Republican, and even though he had been nominated by a Republican, she was one of the Republicans who voted in opposition to Clement Haynesworth. And then President Nixon tried to get another southern judge in, Harold Carswell, and that's what this cartoon is about. He was even more stridently anti-civil rights than Clement Haynesworth had been, and there were also concerns about his qualifications and that 40% of his decisions had been overruled by higher courts. So this is a case where Margaret Chaysmith voted against three Supreme Court nominations in the late '60s, early 1970s, and that's what this cartoon is playing off of, Profiles in Courage, the John Kennedy book, and then even in the newspaper headlines, tying into her Declaration of Conscience, referring to this as a vote of conscience. Couple announcements I want to make before I unleash you onto lunch. That is, we are going to have a very gnarly head business year this year. This is sort of our first post-COVID year with lots of school groups coming back, but we have planned a lot of events as well. We have book discussion groups going on throughout the year. We're going to be starting a new one on June 20th, going through the summer, which is going to tie in with the bicentennial of Skowhegan, the 200th anniversary of Skowhegan this year. And our first event will be Amy Calder coming to speak about her book, and that'll be on June 20th in the evening at 6:30, so be looking out for announcements about that. In July, we'll have Earl Shuttleworth come and talk about architecture in Skowhegan. And then in August, on the 26th, we'll have our annual appreciation day, that's going to be on a Saturday this year, so hopefully we get more families here. And there'll be other things going on throughout the year as well. I think on the front desk, you'll find a list of all the events going on, an announcement about Amy Calder's talk and some events that we had going on for kids. We're going to be doing a slime workshop coming up, so talk to him about slime, and not talking about Supreme--
Fits in with the political system, fine.
The last thing, we just have been notified that Hennepin has picked us for the reusable bags for the month.
Yeah!
It only counts at the Skowhegan-Hennepin, Augusta, not in Portland, not in Farmington, you have to go to--
Somerset County Economic--
The last thing I want to remember to do is, I'm about to let you go off to lunch, and we have not had to charge you for either breakfast or lunch, because the family, the LaFon family from here in Skowhegan, their father Paul LaFon was a very faithful attendee of the main town meetings, and he passed away, the family wanted to do something to recognize him, and they decided to give money to the library, so that we put this event on at low cost or no cost. And this year, to get you all back, we decided to do it at no cost. So we thank the LaFons. All right, so it's time for lunch, and the way we'd like you to do that is if you could go down the hallway where the restrooms are, go through the research room, and Nicole will be down there to route you through, her preserve, and then you'll come up the hallway, going past the Heritage House tables. In the past, we had people going in both directions, it was a pretty tight fit, we don't want any collisions. And come back here, enjoy your lunch, and if you have more questions with the speakers, hopefully you'll save that out. I want to thank you all very much for coming, letting us get to main town meetings.